All right. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Friday, June 25 at noon. Is there a roll call, please?
Joe Schenk, present.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Kell, present. The meeting is being recorded. It is live on Channel 9 and it will also be posted on the YouTube channel. Are there any additions or deletions? I think everything that I have fits under one of the topic.
I have three things that need to be talked about briefly. For Guardian, we can do it under Communications if you'd like.
Okay, let's do that then.
I have.
All right, go ahead.
And I've got the RAT update.
The RAT update? Did I put that on here? I don't think I did. That was new. Okay. RAT update. We'll do that under Communications as well then.
Communications, hang on.
Anything else? Did I get all of yours, Chaz? I did.
Yes.
Okay, all right. It's all Guardian related. Okay. Moving down to the work session, business, the town administration, updates and reports. First thing on the agenda is the public water supply and the PFAS public forum. The forum is at 7:00 PM. And Mary Jude Pixley from DEP, I just got off the phone with her. She is hoping to attend the forum to answer questions. And she is putting together perhaps an abbreviated presentation. She's counting on our Board of Water Commissioners to have all the information about the location of the wells, et cetera. And Chaz, you were at that meeting with the Water Commissioners. Let me just finish before I turn over to you. She was going to send, I asked her to send it to selectmen@townsendma.gov. The, let me see here, I wrote it down. The presentation bits that she's hoping to put together, they've been presenting in a lot of towns because there are many, many towns with this. Townsend is just ahead of the curve in that we tested earlier than was required. So there are pieces that will be left out. So we are to be commended for that. So what I have done, Misty has sent me the agenda and also what she has put up on Facebook. I will try to get that onto our website tonight. Chaz, you sent me the flyer and I need to get that on the website. I just haven't had time.
Which is understandable.
Yeah, so the two things I had were opening the building at 7:00 PM. I need to make sure that that happens because this is an in-person only meeting. So for people that might be listening to this or watching in the future, the meeting to, the public forum for PFAS is Monday evening, June 28 at 7:00 PM, in person at the Great Hall. And also the sound system for that. We need to give the go-ahead to put in the order for that. For TCAM, the question is payment for that. Where from our budget does that come?
Would it be our budget?
It should be under Water Department.
It would be the Water Department budget.
But it's a, it's a public forum, so I mean, there's...
So we, so they can tape it, but we don't have, we, the town, do not have the sound system in Great Hall for that. We do have it in the Selectmen chambers, but we don't have it there.
No, I understand that. I'm saying, I'm talking payment now.
Correct.
So do you want me to approach the Water Department on that real quick? I can do that.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah. I think if I remember right, the budget for that was $1,200?
That's what I saw, yes.
Okay.
I will go ahead and do that and...
Anything for that, Chaz.
No, I just, the meeting I had was with the Chair of the Water Commissioners and the Water Superintendent. They have all the information that's necessary. I know that the Water Commissioner has, one of the Water Commissioners, the Chair, has been doing this for another municipality that he works for on a daily basis. He also is in contact with Mary Jude as well. That's why, you know, I'm familiar with what she's going to be expecting from it. And this is something, we've gotten all the information from her to be able to get that up for the people. So we should be all set for Monday.
Okay. She has a little bit of a time crunch. If she doesn't get her PowerPoint all together for Townsend, because it needs to be edited for our specifics, it's okay with me if we just post it after the fact on the website, but she said she would come. So, for questions and answers. So, all right. Anything else on that or are we good to go? I'll find out about opening the building. Chaz, you'll find out about the payment for the sound system. And we will direct TCAM to order the sound system for Monday night. Do we need a motion?
I think we should, just to be safe. So I move that we, once we acquire where the financing is coming from for the sound, to order the sound for Monday, June 28, 7:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
All right. Veronica Kell, yes. It is unanimous. All right. All right, moving on to finances. All of these are under finances. I'm looking for my notes here. All right. The first is the American Recovery Act funding. We are still in need of the non-unit entitlement, the non-entitlement unit NEU number for Townsend. That is, it has to do with budget and for FY20 for the relief funding. And I talked to Adam and we should be able to, he was going to send me some information on that and we'll be able to suss out which number. It's not that we don't have the budgeting numbers, it's just that we need to know which one to send.
What's the right one, yeah.
Yeah. So that, we hope to get done today. The next thing under, that's all that's under that. So we have not yet put in the application to claim our funds for the most recent Recovery Act plan, but we will. We have until June 30.
Yep.
All right. Next one is Purple Heart Community Purchases. Joe Mazzola is here with me. And I want to, so Joe, you're on camera here. I just wanted to say that he brought me the proclamation. We had voted as a board to proclaim a, the community as a Purple Heart community. And Purple Heart Day is August 7. So he is hoping to order signs to put up in the community. And Joe, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, we're going to purchase signs that go through the community for road signs that go on the highways. You must notice them in other community. And I'm purchasing 25 signs, I mean, excuse me, 15 signs to go up throughout the town of Townsend at the borderlines. They'll be ordered Monday and we'll have them ready before August 7 to be posted, the highway department will post them out there. Also, we'll have a ceremony on the August 7 at the Town Hall for the dedication of Purple Heart community. The proclamation should be signed today by Veronica and the rest of the Selectmen. And Edmonton's going the right direction.
All right. So for us, he does have budgeted funds for the signs. That was, he and I talked yesterday and did you touch base with the accountants?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. And Joe touched base with the accountants, so we are all set. What I would like to do right now is just read the proclamation where the vote was already taken. I just want to read it so that we can sign. This is more formality. I believe we can sign this without having, you know, formally read it because we did declare, but it's, so let me go forward with that. Proclamation. Whereas the town of Townsend, Massachusetts appreciates the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedom, we acknowledge those men and women for their courage by showing our support and honor. And whereas the citizens of Townsend have great admiration and gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces of the United States of America. And whereas their legacy of patriotism and dedication to our country is an inspiration for all Americans, it is appropriate that all citizens remember the bravery of all those who gave their lives so that their sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of freedom. And whereas August 7 has been designated Purple Heart Day in the United States, now therefore, we the Selectmen and Selectwoman of the town of Townsend do hereby proclaim Townsend a Purple Heart community, given under our hands and seals, seal this, I'll sign it for today, this 25th day of June 2021. And Chaz and Joe, you need to come in and sign this as well.
When do, when do we have to have it signed by Madam Chair?
Joe, when does it need to be signed by?
The signatures can go on anytime. I mean, if I do sign it today, they can come in on their own. I'll leave it with you and they can sign it.
All right. I'll put this on the counter and when you come in, you can sign. I've signed and I've put in today's date.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam.
All right.
Thank you, Joe, for all your work too.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go in there. Go in there. All right.
Thank you.
So August 7, just know that that is Purple Heart Day and we'll be having a ceremony outside the Town Hall. August 7 is a Saturday. It looks like it's the first Saturday in August. And I'm writing this in right now and I should put something on the town calendar.
I'll put out flyers and all that and information on Facebook and all that.
All right. Did everybody hear that? Joe said he'll put information and flyers out and info on the websites and the Facebook pages so that people know. And that will be at Town Hall. All right. Thank you very much, Joe. We appreciate it. And I'll keep this and put it on the counter there. All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Next thing is the AFSMI Union. I need a motion to accept the clerical pay rates as presented to the union yesterday. And we, that way payroll can get started processing those for FY22. So is there a motion to accept the AFSMI Clerical Union pay rates? I should say with one exception, there was one, the pay rate wasn't in question, but there was one question about one of the people. Is their union placement correct? But other than that, the pay rates are correct. Is there a motion?
And yesterday was what, the 24th?
The 24th, yes. And I have not put those in, I have them for you, I'll put them in SharePoint right after the meeting. But they all matched between what the town calculated and what AFSMI had calculated.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the AFSMI clerical pay rates as presented to the union on 6/24/21 with an exception of one individual.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. I just want to make one, there were a lot of questions as we're going through. So on Tuesday at 8:30 AM, Bobby, Kate, Jared and I are going to be meeting to work out the answers to those questions so that we can finish the AFSMI Union's pay rates. Because FIRE has not yet settled the contract, right now their pay rates will be as it has been. There will be no change to anything for the FIRE department. For non-union, those are pretty much under control. I will put that on the agenda for probably Tuesday. I did just send the agenda to be posted, knowing that there, for Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM, we have a meeting then. So the agenda is not, there are placeholders in there. I don't have all the names in for all the appointments and I will add this to the revision. So it will be revised hopefully by this afternoon at 4:00. So, so that we can get that all done for the new fiscal year. So that's where we stand. All right. Moving on to Guardian IT payments. I thought there was one highway from the highway budget. So I put that in here. Do we want to discuss that here, Chaz, or later?
I have sent in a, I sent out an email to Mr. Smith in regards to that. And I haven't gotten an answer back yet, so.
All right. So that will just get moved out to our Monday meeting?
I would assume, yes. I, no, I still don't have an answer, so we should put it on Monday.
All right. For the COVID funding for salaries, moving down?
Hang on, is it the Guardian IT payments? Does this have anything to do with us paying Guardian?
I just put that in there. Okay, let me talk about that. Let's back up to Guardian IT payments. I spoke with the interim accountants yesterday. This is for municipal transfers. And perhaps I should have added this under Chairman additions or deletions. I was going to do it more under announcements. But municipal release transfers, to FinCom went the five that we've approved. There are others that are in the works that hopefully we will see on Monday. Guardian is one. Legal is another. The one to request funds for the boarding up of the buildings, that went to the accountants yesterday. It was explained to me that all the remaining MRTs, I think that FinCom can approve through July 15, I believe is the date. And so they are working on those. There was a question about one of the ones that we had transferred for Board of Health. It was into a revolving fund and we cannot transfer into a revolving fund, apparently. So they were going to look at that and see if maybe the fund name was wrong or if there was something questionable on that. So in any event, those are being dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good.
So, COVID funding for salaries, as far as I know right now, that halts. Because we, I'm not sure, I haven't had time to check on the status of that. So we're just going to have to, you know, it's July 2 through the 12th, I believe, are the dates that we have bathrooms not being cleaned. I believe that this falls under facilities, even if the COVID funding isn't there to bring in the other person that's been doing it.
Okay.
So I have to find out on that. Sorry. NFP payments, I did, so I'm moving on to the next one. NFP payments, I did speak with council this morning because the May, the one that's dated May 4, 2020, I believe that's the date on it. I haven't even pulled out last week's, last meeting's things. The May 2021 was signed and there was work done in FY21. That should be put forward for payment.
Do we need a motion on that?
We do need a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve and pay NFP invoice for May 2020 to 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. For the contract that was dated May 2021, that was never brought before the Selectmen and has not been signed, I will be sending an email to the vendor from the Board of Selectmen, if this is agreeable with you guys, stating that we will not be entering into a fiscal year 22 contract at this time, that when an interim is in place, we will be reviewing our consulting needs for health insurance. So is there a motion?
I have, I move that we allow the Chair to send a letter to NFP in regards to their 2021, 2022 invoice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So two motions. I'll stop down to talk to the Treasurer about that payment, although I see he's on here, so. Okay, FY22 insurance. I also had a discussion with Council on this. This, the insurance needs of the town is not something that Council is typically involved with. The finance team has it and as long as the terms are all agreed to by the finance team in the town, it's typically allowed to go forward. So I, I would, I have deferred this to our, to both Monday's agenda and I can't remember whether I've put it on for Tuesday or not, but I have asked the agent to come in on Tuesday for signatures since I assume we will all be in Town Hall and can sign at that time. We are like down to the wire for getting this done for FY22. But as long as there are no red flags that are brought up through the accountants who have just come on board or others on the finance team, you know, as long as the assessing team and the Treasurer's team are all good with it, we're good to go. I'm assuming this has been, this was reviewed by everybody prior to it being budgeted. So let's, let's just hold off on a motion to sign until then, but I did invite the agent to come on Tuesday evening.
Okay.
So, and we'll move the motion for that to Monday or, motion on Monday. I'd just like the, there to be a little bit more time for review if needed. All right. Japanese knotweed and insurance ties into this because the, and I believe I did put this in SharePoint, is what Bill Wrightout got from Groton on insurance. Their insurance already covers the application of herbicide. So they did not have to do anything to their insurance for this to happen. They are permitted to do that. So that is how the volunteer knotweed remover is covered under Groton's insurance. And we would be using him for the town for what, knotweed on town property, extricating that. And then the rail trail would be doing it for properties in town that the rail trail is on. So they have done nothing out of the ordinary with their insurance. The applicator is a volunteer. They have a team for controlling invasives and all that. They have a committee. And the applicant, the person doing the app, applying is on the, on that team in Groton. So that might be something that we need to consider here. I don't know, for having him apply. Apply the pesticide, the herbicide, that is.
I get, okay, so I'm confused. Are we supposed to form a committee to get this done or can we, does our insurance policy, would they be able to carry this individual to be able to eradicate the knotweed?
It's not a matter of carrying the individual. It's a matter of covering that application, whomever is chosen to do it. So I don't have an answer on that piece yet.
Okay. Well, then we need that answer because we would like to probably get moving on that.
Yep, absolutely. So, answer to herbicides. Application, okay. All right. So that's where we are on that. I just, I put that on here because I wanted to report it out so that it didn't get lost in the mix.
Good.
Report on interim and temporary position search. I believe you need to recuse yourselves, Joe. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that. I think you have to...
No, if we're talking about that, I'm going to recuse myself and stop videoing and just text me to come back.
Okay. We'll bring you back for this interim TA. All right. So, Chaz, you and I have both seen the applicant, we did receive one internal candidate for the interim administrative position up here in the BOSS office. And I guess I would like a motion to go forward with, with that hire. And we can have further conversation individually with the person, I believe, and then, you know, have a motion to appoint on Monday.
Yes, I have a, I have a question in regards to the posting that we put. Was there a timeframe that we put on there or?
You would ask that question. Did I put that in SharePoint? I believe I did. Hang on one second. I'm going to SharePoint.
I just want to make sure we had ample time that if there were any other applicants, they had time to do so as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I believe a posting has to be on the board for 10 days.
Okay, so it was an internal posting?
Yeah.
Even an internal posting needs 10 days?
10 days.
Okay.
You've been on for more than 10 days, so you're fine.
No, I think I sent that on after the Monday meeting, did I not?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have not been for 10 days. Oh, wow, that would be till the end of next week. Is it business days, Andrea? You probably know this off the top of your head better than me.
I should think it's business days, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so in that case, we could not hire until Tuesday, the 6.
Okay, so do, are we still, we're still allowed to be able to interview or talk to the individual that, that applied, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
And you could, if you wanted to play the game. You could appoint them temporarily and then make it as an absolute hire because you don't need to post to hire someone temporarily.
Oh, we don't need to post to hire someone temporarily?
I don't, I don't believe you do.
And if that's the case...
It's a great way to attract people, but I don't think it's legally necessary.
So we could appoint and then formally, do it formally after the 10 days?
I believe so.
Okay, I am going to check this out with...
Oh, do, oh, do.
To make sure, because we are learning the rules, Andrea, as we go along and I just confirm as we go.
Well, you know, sometimes over the years, so many games have been played, it kind of gets to be a mix on what's the reality and what isn't.
I agree there.
Right. So, yeah, if it has to be posted for 10 days, that's fine. It is an internal. I don't... I don't think it's down on the posting board outside of Town Hall.
I don't think it needs to be, it's internal, the internal board is different, yes.
Okay, so this was an internal posting only, I guess the question to Council is, does the 10 days apply?
Well, what, what I would like, Madam, Madam Chair, is if, I would like to reach out to the applicant and set up a, a Zoom with that individual, and I can talk with that individual, and I would suggest maybe if you could do the same thing as well.
Okay.
And then, in the, in the interim, we can allow Council to review that particular process, and then, you know, we can.
Okay.
I, I just want to expedite it, because we, we do need to get that filled as soon as we can.
We absolutely need that in place.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes? Rod, is that you Roger?
Yeah, Article 6, Recruitment Selection in the Policies and Procedures Manual, explains it.
And it addresses temporary and internal?
Does address calendar 10 days, it does talk about job vacancy notices, I just haven't had a chance to read everything, because I'm.
Article 6.
Yeah.
So Madam Chair, I think that we should just go ahead and check with Council, just to be sure, and go ahead with our individual Zoom conversations.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you Roger.
Thank you Roger, thank you Andrea, all right, we'll, we'll go forward with that. All right, so now we need to bring Joe back, so do you want to text him, Chaz?
Yes, if I have his number here.
Because I do have a few things that I want to say about the interim TA.
There he is.
Okay, I'm back. All right, sorry about that.
So on the interim TA, so glad you're back Joe, on the interim TA, I, I have received two other names that I'm gonna approach directly to see if they're available, I'll, I'll put information in SharePoint as I get it for Monday meeting, but what I would like to do is to go forward and get the team set up to review and to get dates, maybe one day towards the end of next week, if we have resumes, and perhaps towards the end of 4th of July week, to review any resumes that come in, so that we can get an interim TA in here ASAP. I feel like we've gotten the accounting, that's rolling forward, if we get an office assistant in for the Board of Selectmen temporarily, that will be moving forward, we can now bring in an interim TA who can hopefully just pick up and roll, everything is pretty much in place with the other hires that he would need, you know, the other, the other departments that he would be interfacing with, so.
I'm good with that.
Are you good with me? I have a draft written up, I'll put it in SharePoint after this meeting to go out to department heads, the stewards for the union whose names, whose emails I have, there are some union stewards whose emails I do not have, specifically Police Department and Highway Water, they are people that are in the union but do not have town email addresses. So I, I'm counting on department heads and other union stewards to get those out to everybody. We had decided that it would be the five unions, one representative, one non-union representative, and the three of us on the committee for a portion. So which means we, we will be doing joint meetings with Board of Selectmen and this for the interim appointment, and I don't think there are any rules for interim appointments in the Charter, those are just the ones that we made the motion for previously.
Correct.
All right, so as long as I have a consensus that you are good with me sending that out, so look at it, actually, I'll send it to you guys, to Selectmen first, you can look at what I have written and determine whether or not that wording can go out to all the department heads for the committee.
Okay.
All right.
I'm good, thank you.
I'll get that out to you, because we do need to get that seated, I think it's most important to have the committee ready to roll, so that when we do get in resumes, they can immediately go out and we have a review date.
Proactivity, you know that I'm a proponent of that.
Okay, all right, and that way we can get someone in a little more quickly than if we say, okay, we have the resumes, when can you meet?
Yep.
Could take.
Perfect.
All right, I'm moving on from 5.14 to 5.15, the wall that heals, flags and bunting at Town Hall and on the common, I think I already said that Roger said he would be putting up the flags on the common and the bunting on the gazebo, the flags are out at Town Hall, thanks to Eno and Rob, they got those out yesterday, I believe the bunting are not in good enough condition to be put up, so.
On Town Hall.
On Town Hall, they were gonna look at them, and if they were in good condition, they would put them up, if they're not, they would not. So that is there, town band payments, did you have a chance to talk to Betty May Tenny at all?
Yes, I did, and spoke to her, she is all right with us moving forward to, she'll take it out of her budget for this time, as long as we all agree that we're going to put it back in her account, and I told her we, we did vote that, you know, at special town meeting, whatever we need to do, if it's 1,300 or 1,200 and something, she wasn't sure, need the full 13, but whatever that amount was, as long as we say right here that we're going to give it back to her, she is okay with that.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that when, that the, the band committee will forward $1,300 to pay for the band for the wall that heals, and the Selectmen will provide for reimbursement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes, we will provide for reimbursement at special town meeting.
At special town meeting, yes, so amended, thank you very much Betty.
Thank you. The other thing, Roger had talked to me yesterday about porta potties on the common.
Excuse me?
Andrea, yes.
About special town meeting, you do realize that you can't take money from free cash until free cash has been certified? So that may, may change the date on your special town meeting, that's all.
It has to be certified, we're looking at FY21 after that free cash is, is certified?
After the free cash is certified, then you can take money from it, but before then, you can't.
Correct.
So if you're gonna reimburse Betty May, and the money hasn't been certified, you're out of luck.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if you understood, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that much I've got.
Okay, great.
I may not know the postings, but I've got that down. All right, and I mean, learning the municipal transfers, all right, so porta potties on the common, that was taken out of Roger's budget for next year, but Betty May had said that perhaps she would be, if she had extra funds, she would be willing to put porta potties on for the band concerts, so I, I don't know, Roger, are you there, are you able to talk more about this? Sometimes Roger is there in name only, if he walked away from the, in any event, so the question becomes porta potties on Town Common, and I guess my question is, does this have to go for, through the Historic District Commission? Is there approval for that? Are you, I mean, can you do thing, just say, oh yeah, we're putting porta potties on the Town Common?
I think you, you can, one of the things with Roger.
Andrea, yeah, go ahead, when you're, go ahead.
I, I, I understand the contract that he didn't renew, there were two, two vendors, one was higher than the other, the higher one, though, cleaned the porta potties at the bottom line cost, the contractor that he contracted with charged for cleaning the porta potties, and that's why they didn't go on with that contract.
Okay.
It had nothing to do with whether, with the Historic District or anything, as far as I know, there's never been a problem in putting them on in the past.
Okay, so I think what I would like Roger is, if you can get us more details on that, and bring it to the meeting to see, you know, to discuss in more detail, I think the funding was coming out of the band concert fund, but I'm not really sure, we did not budget for porta potties on the common for the coming fiscal year.
The, the parks and cemetery and parks are the ones that would be the ones that we would have to deal with, Historic District Commission only really deals with the signage, they don't really have anything else to do with.
With what is there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so Roger, if you're hearing this, bring it forward for another meeting with a little more detail, so that would be good. Okay, anything else on the wall that heals?
Not for now.
Well, no, I think we've seen, they've started posting the, the route in the times, so the, the wall that heals has done an official posting, they don't give an exact route itself, so I know we had that discussion, until we see the exact route, I, I think we want to hold off saying which way it's coming for now.
Okay, I, I think we'll have the sufficient flags, you know, we'll be, the committee's doing a great job, the flag committee, in getting the flags ready, and they should be up tomorrow.
Yep, they should be up tomorrow.
So I, I think we're covered there, and as long as you two are good with who's speaking when.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll be there, but I'm not planning on speaking, so.
Well, I'll have a, I'll post a, a, what, what I plan on for the speech, and then if we need to, we can talk about it on Monday, or, or one of the meetings next week.
Well, I'd hoped I would have seen something by now, but I did reach out to him again yesterday, and he's been really busy, there's so much finalizing, but I, I think we can pull it together, we'll.
I thought you meant for me Joe, I was ready to.
No, 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 I'm, I'm still sitting here sweating what we're gonna do, so we'll figure it out.
No, I'll, I'll have the speech out to you guys probably this weekend, and then we can, if we need to discuss it, we can do it before the first.
Okay.
On 5.1.6, I'm moving on from the wall that heals, I hope that's good, all right, unregistered vehicles complaints, I, I had an officer from the Townsend Police Force contact me this week, saying that there was, and that he's dealing with an unregistered vehicle complaint, that the next step is to have the Selectmen send a letter, it looks like in doing the research on this letter that I've been doing, it looks like there was also a complaint, so the one that we're dealing with is on Tyler Road, the one now, there was another one on Tamarack Lane, that was also in this March timeframe, I, I'm not sure about the March one, I know that the current one, a letter has not been sent, and that is apparently the process, the Board of Selectmen send a letter once the, the police have done their investigation, so it, it appears that it's time for letters to be sent on both of these, so I just wanted to let you know, and I'm not so sure that we need a, a vote to do this, perhaps we do, so I will get.
I would be safe and do so.
I will get exact addresses and, and add that to our Monday agenda.
Okay, I was going to suggest that.
Okay.
Perfect.
So unregistered vehicle, letter, addresses. To Monday, all right. All right, shared streets and spaces procurement, I just wanted to report out on that, it appears that the, with the exception of three, we, we, the committee have called the vendors, and we're meeting again on Monday evening to be sure, we are investigating whether we can bid it out for each of the separate pieces as opposed to as a whole, and exactly where we can bid it, so we're in process with that, so more to come, right now, we do not have any bidders, and I, I just wanted you all to be aware of that, because we will need to get this bidded and done, our date for completion is now December 30th, but it still needs to be bid out and brought in, so we're hoping to get that bid out again next week, and there is question about how that is done, but we do have consulting hours that can be tapped into if need be, so just know.
All right.
All right, reports from board liaisons.
Joe, you have anything?
Well, where do we put the RAT update?
We can do it under announcements and communication.
I have that under announcements, the RAT update is coming, how about you Chaz?
I just, I just want to say that with, I know the boards and committees that I work with, you know, it's, this is working out as far as I see it, that if anybody has any concerns, or they want to talk about something, they go to their particular liaison, whoever's appointed to their section, I, I just want to say that, you know, working well together with everybody, it's, it's been a real joy to kind of meet the people that I've talked to on the phone, and I haven't really met in person, but I feel that things are working out really well, and I just want to thank our employees for, for being flexible with us and, and helping us out, and we're doing all that we can, as far as the townspeople is concerned, to make sure that each department is there to be able to better serve the, the townspeople, so I just personally want to say thank you to everybody that's been working hard over the last few weeks.
Madam Chair, just on the update, Fire Department, just a little update, the, the union rep came to me the other day, said that we, when we went into negotiations, and I, I thought we were all set, but evidently, they went to Mr. Kreidler right after, and said that they weren't happy with what was going on, but evidently, he never relayed it to any of us, because I knew nothing about it, where we do not have Counsel, they sent me a, I'd say a honeydew list of what they want in their request, and I forwarded that to, to Counsel, and I've asked her for her advice, and she advises that she will reach out to union representation, and she will set up a meeting to go back in the negotiations to try to figure this out.
Okay, thank you, that sounds good, for now though, everything is just staying status quo with that.
Yes, yes.
All right, board liaisons, I guess I can put this in there, I am the Conservation Board Liaison, although they did not contact me, I will say that the letter that was sent to the Conservation Chair was received on 6/23, so it was delivered, so that's the only report I have. All right, that puts us down to announcements and communications, so I guess this is where the RAT update, Joe, go ahead.
All right, we gotta be serious now, all right, as I did reach out to Rob, and I asked him as far as what's kind of going on, and he has said that we have really, he personally has been struggling with the pest control of all our town buildings over the past several years since he's been there, they have no contract with Bane, but prior administration decided they wanted to use them, they took the contract away from Montezot, and the way I was understanding it by him, Rob said that when they had Montezot Pest Control under contract, they would take care of all the buildings, there wasn't any issues with anything, and he's very unhappy with Bane, he calls them up, they don't show up, then they do show up, and so. He calls them up, they don't show up, then they do show up. And so he he's expressed his opinion that he would like to see the town go back to the original pest control company and move forward with the bids that we have with the rat problem. It's kind of getting a little bit worse. And he also mentioned that the the Police Department wants to get back on a pest control program that would come out of that budget, of course. But I I think we as a board need to nip this and and get this taken care of and sign the contract and have him reach out to to Monticuzet and whatever they need to do to sign however we need, I think we need to move forward with that.
Go ahead, Chaz, because I I have thoughts on this.
So we do not have a contract with Bain at all? We are we're not under contract with any pest control?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Chair.
I want to hold off, sorry, until FY22. I want to look at where this sits in the budget for FY22 in the facilities budget. Does it get put under each building? Does it get put, you know, how does this fit into the budget? I I would like that looked at before. I I see Jared has a hand up, so as soon as I finish here, I'll call on him. I I would just like to know where that gets sat. So Jared, do you have something to say on this or did I miss your hand for a previous?
It's just enough there for a few minutes. No, I just before you guys can finish this conversation if you want first.
Well, do you have, do you have thoughts on it?
Not on this, no.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I missed your hand completely.
But Madam Chair, well, my only concern is if if they've come to us and there's that kind of a problem in Town Hall with the rat, I can understand holding off on any kind of contract. But I think we have to, as a board, we need to at least make sure that that is taken care of him. Whatever the proposal he has to deal with the rat problem and the insect problem right now, we need to deal with it. If somebody was to ever get bit by a rat or anything and we know the problem, then let's talk about maybe have him reach out to them, see what kind of a deal he can make up before we sign a contract by all means. But I think we have to, you know, take care of this rat problem right now before it gets worse.
I I have the two estimates. I scanned them before I left here yesterday. I just did not have a chance to send them to you guys yet. So I'll put them in. One is for about 1,400 for this building, for the Town Hall building, and one is for about 1,200 for the Dudley Road building. And I don't know if that Dudley Road building is the Police Department or is it the?
Senior Center. It's the Senior Center. Yeah, Senior Center.
Probably with all the digging that's going on there, it's opened things up. I don't know. I agree that it needs dealt with. My my only concern is we have accountants that are working hard to get things settled for FY21 and I, at at this stage of the game, I don't see the advantage to putting one more FY21 thing in place. FY22 starts what, on Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A week from yesterday. And so I I would rather see that go on that side of the matter. That's all.
But but could we just, okay, just go with this today? So say that we don't have to have another conversation, another meeting. Just say, hey, Rob, after fiscal year 22 starts, you know, come in and then if it's under the the facilities budget, whatever, if we have to tweak some, but at least he can move forward and we don't have to move forward on this.
Okay, fine detail as far as dates go, but can I have a motion for this to to go forward with the two? If the contract is acceptable through it it's a fact that there, if it's a facilities budget, I need to know and it will be the FY22.
Yeah, we gotta, we, I I, Joe, I I understand your urgency on it. But here's the thing, we're we're in a kind of like the doldrums of budgets here. We're between one budget and the other. And if we make a decision now, we're gonna, we may we may not be in a a good situation going forward. Let let me clarify, Joe, is is facilities looking to just take care of the remediation or something to do something immediately now to cut down the probable causes of things happening?
Yes.
So are we looking at one application? Are we looking at bait traps? Are we looking for, you know?
Well, he kind of mentioned that he's a little baffled. There's a bunch of bait traps everywhere that everybody that's done any kind of pest control has been putting a sticker on. He feels that the town owns them. But I believe the way I understood it, and I may be wrong, I don't have those proposals in front of us, but the proposal he put out is just to eradicate the rat problem right now before it gets worse.
So the invoices that you have now, because I haven't seen them.
Forward this right now to both of you. Are you on?
Yeah.
I I I scanned it at 4:46 yesterday and I was gonna put it in the SharePoint because I have been not sending things, as you know, directly to the two of you. So it it was gonna go in SharePoint last night and you should have it now. It's one of those SKM things. And I just forwarded it to Selectmen.
Okay.
I can read from it right now. This is for the Dudley Road. Rat bait refill all yearly is 250. Yearly foundation spray, which excludes termites is 650. The refill all bait stations on exterior of the building. So that's what they're doing. Town already has rat bait bait stations on the exterior of the building. Yearly foundation spray for 650 and yearly eaves of the exterior of the building sprayed for bees. And any other flying insects excluding bats. And that's 1,250. And then there's a a monthly optional service.
This also says note, the town of Townsend excludes multiple contracts simultaneously on three or more properties. A 10% discount will be applied to any yearly services. This discount does not apply to any monthly contract fees. This is just the immediate application or the the immediate remedy.
Yeah, so I think we need to look at these a little bit more.
Yeah, I agree. I'm sorry, Joe. I I agree.
You know, not that I want rats in Town Hall by any means, but i- in any event, I I think we need to.
Can we put this on Monday?
We can put this on Monday. I'm revising Monday big time, aren't I? Okay, so the vehicles and rat bait.
Rat bait.
Okay, all right. So we'll pest control contract, I'll call it. So could we just pause here one minute and Jared, could you bring up whatever we missed? I'm sorry I missed you.
No, you're fine, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I missed, or I walked up during the Guardian IT discussion. I have some bills here. I just wanted to know if those were approved to pay or not.
Were they signed?
Uh, they were, Chad sent them to me.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what I was making reference to.
Okay, so maybe we're right at the point where we should be, Guardian IT.
Yep.
Okay, I saw it up further. I apologize.
Yeah, we we did have it up for further for highway from highway budget, which you might not have seen.
My fault, thank you.
Yeah, no, this is a fine time to discuss it.
Can we finish with the rats, though? Are we done with that? We're gonna talk about it Monday. I just want Selectman Schenk to be okay with the discussion.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. I mean, I I just, I was only doing my part that I was asked to follow up with the maintenance and he just had a lot of concerns that he wanted to just move forward. But I mean, the rats have been there probably for however now. So I mean, whatever we take our time and we do things right, I think is the best way to move forward.
And I agree, and I want to get it done as quickly as possible, but I also, because it's there's a fiduciary responsibility for us, I want to be able to look at these contract or this, the invoices before we make a decision on it.
Absolutely.
I think even with those invoices, maybe we need something, we need to make sure that there's annual, you know, that it's an ongoing.
Yep.
Well, well, Madam Chair, how about if we do this? If we're thinking that we would like to move forward, at least have Rob reach out to the pest control company, however he wants to do it, and then maybe bring that person in and explain to us what do we get? What do they do? So we'll all all understand what's being done.
If that's the case, that is a July 20th discussion.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
And that's fine. I mean, we could do that. I mean, it doesn't have to be today, I don't think.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Okay, back to Guardian IT and the the invoices that Jared has. Are they, are they in need of signature, Jared? I I think that typically.
No, just to pay.
On the warrant, right?
Yep.
I think that what we've been doing with Guardian is putting them on, at least this is what I've been seeing over the year. When we get the warrant, there are always Guardian IT and we sign off on the warrant. So would, is this something different? Chaz?
No, I'm getting the invoices in from Guardian and I sent them to Jared. So this is.
So they're coming to you.
Yep. Instead of, exactly.
Oh, so it's just a change in path based on our current situation?
Yes.
All right. So Jared, I think that, yeah, they go on the warrant for pay.
All righty, I'm paying them.
Thank you. And I just sent you another one.
I got it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
I know that there was one for replacement equipment in the Highway Department. That one's a little bit different and it's waiting. It's, you haven't sent that one along yet, right?
No, I haven't approved that one yet.
Okay, so is there anything else?
I have two. One is I I don't mean to be cryptic, but I also need to be careful on the information being shared. When, for our our telephone system, when Guardian makes the changes on our telephone system, which we've already authorized them to be able to do, they use an employee's account to sign on to the TPX system to be able to do that. And what I would like to be able to let Guardian know is to tell TPX to give Guardian their own administrative logins so that when they log in, they log in as Guardian and not as one of our employees.
As law, I am good with that as long as we, the town, know when they are logging in.
Yes, we, yes. They will only log in.
On their own, log into that system.
No, they only log in when we tell them we need to add a phone, we need to take away a phone, we need to to change an email that, I mean, a voicemail, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, and and just while you're talking phones, yesterday morning before I I was up in Town Hall early and I know Rob was working with a gentleman that did all the wiring of the phones and everything.
That's, that's, Joe, that's, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, buddy, but that's another conversation.
Okay.
I'm aware of that as well.
All right, I was just gonna ask if they reached out to you or not.
Yeah, I I'll get you because that's the second thing that I want to talk about.
Okay, so do we need a motion to have TPX create a Guardian account, but there needs to be some sort of a, with the condition that there is an approval that that account does not get used without a a ticket, so to speak, or some sort of direction from.
It is part of their, it's part of their contract, Veronica. It's all part of what they do. But when they log into the telephone system, they're using an an employee's login info as opposed to their own. That's all it really is.
Okay, all right. If that's all it is, if it's part of what they've normally done.
Yep.
Then I I am good with that. That way the tracking is that it's them and not the employee.
Right. And to answer that question, I'd rather do it when we have our executive session because that goes into other network security things that you guys need to to know on on what we have and where we want to go. But I I just don't want to do it in open session.
Okay, and I'm putting that IT executive session on, which agenda are you expecting it?
Whenever you want. We're still working out details. Okay, July 20th is.
I was starting to put it on next week, but next week is getting really busy.
Yeah.
Let's go to July 20.
Yeah, it's not, it's not immediate needs, but this is, I'm doing things and you know, how do you eat an elephant? In very small bites. So that's what I'm doing.
Exactly.
On, so if we need a vote for for us to do that or for me to approve that?
I think we do. So is there a motion to give Guardian a separate TPX account so as not to be using an employee's?
I make a motion that we allow TPX to give Guardian a separate account so that we do not have to have Guardian sign in under an employee's account.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Okay, we've already got a trouble ticket in. I'm gonna improve that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The second bit of business, Joe, goes into what you had, we're talking about in regards to Rob. And if it's, if it has anything to do with the Guardian or IT, I'd appreciate if you just talked to me first before it gets brought up, only because there's a a couple of issues that we need to discuss as a board on, in this executive session that touches upon some some security issues.
The problem with that is Joe can't bring it up except in this meeting.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Well, and and the only reason I did because he caught me as I was walking out the door and I asked him to reach out to you. So I was just bringing it up to see if he reached out to you. So it's.
We're all good here.
We're all on the same page. Which is good. I mean, we're communicating. I like that. We had a, we had an elevator inspection as as normal course and the emergency telephone within the elevator was not working. Therefore, we needed to problem solve that. With there's, there's difficulties because we have Verizon, we have Comcast, we have Guardian, we have the elevator people. I talked with Rob in regards to that. There are issues in regards to the Centrex lines that go in. There's debt, it has to be a dedicated line that goes in there. We're not really sure of what's going on as far as what line goes where. And this is probably what Rob was talking to you about. But there's a, there's an audit that is done that I had a conversation, well, several conversations now. I I have looked at the audit myself and the audit. There there needs to be everything was funneled through an employee and then it went to to Guardian to be able to work with Comcast and Verizon. And there was confusion in regards to what's a Centrex line and all that. I would like to be able to work through this audit, put the onus on Guardian where it needs to be so that Guardian can contact Comcast or contact Verizon if they need to, to get these out. As it stands now, to get the elevator fixed, we have to have the elevator person, a Guardian person. And we just now found out today that we don't need a Verizon, but we had to have all three in order to do that. So I would just like to move forward with getting this letter. I'll send it to you two to see exactly what we're trying to do so that we have a much more seamless ability to to be in control of both our IT, our telephone and our security system.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So I will go ahead and do that. I'll report back on the the elevator phone, but it looks like I had a conversation with Rob this morning. And it looks like we have everything set for July 7th to get that all straightened out.
Oh, good. Okay.
And the rest is, we can wait until the executive session.
All right. Thank you, Chaz. We appreciate everything you're doing with Guardian.
That's.
Big job. That's a big job. That's a big task.
It's like herding cats.
Okay, the last thing I have is the owl. The owl will be making an appearance. Dave's in here in the room. So he'll answer any up if I have them, but the owl will be making a test drive at our Tuesday night meeting to to see how we like it. So Tuesday is our regular evening meeting. It is a. It is a Zoom meeting, but because we have an executive session at 7:00 PM that day, it would be good if all three of us were in attendance here. So let me know if you can't be on Tuesday.
I thought we were doing, I thought we were doing all our Tuesday night meetings in-house and then these meetings Zoom. So we're gonna, we're gonna be there.
That is what we're doing, but I have a Zoom link published for Tuesday night as well.
Oh, I see.
So we can test.
And we can test the owl, you know, have the owl on the table so that if there are other people who were to attend in person and they opened their mouth, the owl goes right to them and their little box on Zoom.
Yeah, Joe, we, we were at a, a Selectmen's meeting in Pepperell last night.
Oh, okay.
And they had an owl there. It was actually pretty good. When there were two people talking, it was like this big and then somebody else out of the screen talked and it opened up a little more and it was pretty cool.
Yeah, so it's worth looking at. And that, we can have that available so that maybe in the future, we can just keep Zooms going even though we might be required to be in attendance in person. We could still have Zooms for, for the community to be in real time for the meeting as opposed to watching it after the fact.
Yeah. Madam Chair, may I go back to 5.1.1 real quick?
Sure.
I have had communication with the water commissioner. They said that they do have, they'll be able to accommodate that. They can't save, they can't, because they need a vote on it, but they said that they do have money in the budget for the sound system, so go ahead.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. That answers that question and we can go forward with the sound system for Town Hall. We voted that, you know, funding, based on funding source, so we're good to go with that. So, all right.
And then I would like to have a conversation with TKM in regards to what we'll need as far as, I'd like to get the, a projector in there so that we could do a PowerPoint presentation in the screen.
On Monday night? Can we get a projector in there? Don't we have?
We have one.
Oh, it's up there. We have one mounted in the Selectmen's chambers.
Is that the same one we use for public hearings?
When we have them in the Selectmen's chambers, yes.
We've had one in there with planning board.
In the Selectmen's, oh, do you mean in the other room?
Yeah.
In the great room.
In Memorial Hall.
That was probably, I, I remember having one in the great hall for the marijuana bylaws.
Right.
And we had a projector for that and it was awesome who set that up. So there is a projector laying around somewhere. I'll see if TKM has come across it in their, in their inventory.
Okay.
Of things and we will do the best that we can.
Okay, if we can, I would like that. I'll go ahead and, and run that. If we do, if they can't, no biggie. But if, if Dave can give me a call, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Dave, can you give Chaz a call? He just held up his phone. So you will be receiving a call as soon as.
Okay.
All right. I'm looking to see if I have anything else under announcements and communications. I haven't even looked at my SharePoint to see.
So it would be too early to motion to adjourn?
I, I think we are, next meetings, we have a meeting Monday at noon. It is posted already. We have, but will be revised after today's meeting. We have a meeting Tuesday evening, which has also been sent for posting, but I will be sending a revision this afternoon because I do not have every firefighter's name typed in yet. I know that for sure. And there are a couple of things after today that I want to add there. We are not going to have a meeting on June 30th at noon, but we will go to Friday, the 2nd at noon.
Okay.
And that is it.
Okay.
Awesome.
Adjourn.
I move that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes?
Veronica Kell, yes. The meeting is adjourned at 1:14 PM.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody.